You just did that one.
I thought I approved of having him.
You need.
Wanted the consent first and then.
I needed to amend it and then I needed to adopt it. Is that correct?
No, you made the motion to adopt the agenda as presented with the addition of number four.
Yeah.
We already did that. So now you need to make them have the consent agenda.
We're moving out of the consent agenda.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean supervisor, I make that, like to make the motion to approve the summary of the consent agenda with the.
Leading up.
With the items for work study session March 2nd, 2020, work study meeting March 3rd, 2020, prepaid list March 5th, 2020, prepaid election poll worker payroll March 10th, 2020, prepaid list for March 12th, 2020, and voucher list for March 17th, 2020.
Supported by trustee Miller. Thank you. All in favor of the consent agenda? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next item is public hearing. We have none. Next item is correspondent announcements and presentations. I have one simple announcement. In attempt to limit social gatherings, all events, whether they're in this building or the DDA building, or the Bellev area museum, or the Bellev library, are canceled. All events are canceled until further notice. Does anybody else have any announcements? Harry, now we move on to public comment. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to comment on anything going on today? Harry, now we move to unfinished business. We have none. New business. First item. It's to consider approval of resolution 202008, which is a hiring policy process. Can I get a motion?
Your chair.
Trustee Martin?
I'm going to consider approval of resolution 2020-08, the hiring policy process.
You're pretty much right. Okay. Director, could you give us a overview?
Yes, good afternoon, board. We, it was brought to my attention that we needed a little housekeeping as far as our interviewing process goes. Trustee Miller showed me something in open meetings that we were not aware of. And so we're just trying to amend that process. What I'm asking tonight is to discuss with the board of trustees, given hiring authority to personnel director and his or designated, which is me, the human resource director, through resolution. By giving the authority to human resources for all full-time union, non-union, excluding directors, part-time positions and internships, the township board remains in compliance with the OMA 267 of 1976 without the interruption of day-to-day operation of interviewing employees. With that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Basically, it's a system we've used for the last 20 years. It just codifies the fact that you have given permission for us to hire as you budgeted, staffing the boys. Any questions? Nope. Okay, here we know questions. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, director. Next item is to consider approval of selection of a one-year extension to the existing professional service agreement with HydroCorp. Deputy Director Renault?
You need a motion.
Excuse me, can I get a motion? Treasurer Bud?
I make a motion, we consider the approval of one-year extension to the existing professional service agreement with HydroCorporation.
Support.
Treasurer Bud supports. Okay.
Good afternoon, board. The water and sewer department is submitting a request for a one-year extension to the agreement with HydroCorp to continue to provide services for the township's cross-control program. Both inspections, record keeping, and reports of these cross-connections are mandated through the state, through the Safe Drinking Water Act. HydroCorp is used by many other communities in the metro Detroit area, and we've partnered with them since 2005. This proposal is based upon a total of 135 initial inspections, compliance inspections, and re-inspections of commercial, industrial, and township connections. The contract is for $14,604, which will cover services from April 1st of this year till April 1st of next year. The contract will be paid monthly out of the water fund contracted services. And the only increase in the contract from last year is just about a 3% increase to cover the consumer price index.
It's water sewer, it's a new mandate, we're moving forward. Got to do it. And it's a lot cheaper to hire it out than it is for us to do it. What do they charge per connection?
I don't have that.
I think it's like a hundred dollars or something like that, a connection. So, okay.
For the standard.
Yeah. All right, Harry, no further discussion? All in favor of this contract? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item is to consider the, all right, this is for discussion only. We will not be voting on this today. It'll be moved to the, and it's in for two weeks from now. Okay? So it's discussion on a 10-year ground lease with Habitat Company, which is, what's the name of that group over there, the apartment complex?
Harbor Club.
It's Harbor Club? Okay.
Providence.
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 Providence, yeah. Close to you from Harbor Club. So, so it's basically a lease deal, but go ahead, I'll let you start it off. Thank you. Director?
Certainly. The, what I have, what you have before you today, Board of Trustees, is an opportunity that has been presented to us. The current tennis courts at the Detton Road in Beckley have been closed due to the condition of the facility. Our building grounds, our ordinance staff and our building team was getting ready to potentially ticket this facility for blight. Staff under the direction of the supervisor's office investigated the feasibility of the township leasing the property, renovating the existing tennis courts, and resurfacing the parking lot. The investigation led to a draft proposal that has been presented to you today that allows for a 10-year lease of the property with two, two-year additional extensions and the construction of new outdoor pickleball courts and a parking lot for an estimated $185,000. After discussions with the tennis court property owner, the Habitat Company, who owns the Harbor Club Apartments, which makes up of the north apartments, apartments on the north side of the road and south side of the road, a draft agreement to lease the property for 10 years has been proposed. The Habitat Company would lease the property for a dollar per year, and the tennis courts will be converted into pickleball courts and parking lot restored by a contractor that would be bid out by the township. Van Buren Parks and the Recreation Department program would use the pickleball courts as part of the park system. Outdoor pickleball leagues could be developed as well as drop-in play. Harbor Club residents would be specifically scheduled time for a league if they requested, so they could have their own Harbor Club league if they wanted, run through our Parks and Rec Department, of course. The lease is a standard property lease that has been reviewed and approved by the township attorney. If this contract is approved to be signed, staff would move forward to bid the restoration work. If approved, the project is anticipated to be completed by the end of July 2020. And that may be a little bit longer depending on other decisions we may make today. The project location, if you look at the, the screen, I have the visualizer here, hopefully, there we go. It comes up. The people in the cable room are feverishly working to. There we go. The project location is at Beckley and Detton. These are the tennis courts and the parking lot that we've been talking about. The project, if we decided to lease the property for a dollar, we would hire a contractor to pulverize and resurface the tennis court area, repaint the fence with a black coating, or blue coating, depending on which one we go with. There would be a resurfacing of the parking lot to have a solid surface parking lot and sidewalk along the outside of the fenced-in area. So we'd be able to fit four good-sized pickleball courts inside there. We'd also include money for a sign that would denote that the township and Habitat are working together on a project like this. And then Parks and Rec would then operate this for a period of 10 years. So we'd have outdoor pickleball courts for 10 years at this location. It would be covered under our MMRMA insurance. This would, this facility could be, we got a, just a ballpark price of what we thought it would cost to do that. It would be 185,000 approximately to do what we've kind of outlined for you today. The court is. Court is next to residential on one side. But that's what it's currently, current condition is right now.
Okay.
So be happy to answer any questions you have, but as this is a discussion item, I would, since it's going to be brought back to the board for approval, I would highly recommend that you read through this lease and look it over if you haven't already between now and the next time we meet, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Let me start off with letting, three years ago or so, we started talking about this, about potentially doing this. We didn't, it didn't go anywhere for a couple of reasons. The biggest reason was it's they were, there was a new buyer buying the entire complex. They paid $80 million or something like that for that complex. They've since bought it, and they came in to us about their golf course, trying to work with them on their golf course, and it was completely unworkable what they suggested. But we did say we still, we're still interested in tennis courts, and they came back and says, what do you want to do with the tennis courts? Because they didn't know what to do with them either. We said, we'd like you to fix them up, and they said, well, it's not in our short-term plan. And we said, well, what happens if we took them over and we would change them to pickleball courts? All right? Pickleball is wiping out our gymnasium right now. It is fast-growing. We have leagues in our township now that actually use Canton and some other community, I can't remember the other community. They're over there. They would be coming back to us. They, it fits what they want to do there at the apartments as being an upscale living place they're trying to create. They've got about a $20 million upgrade that they're going to be doing to their apartments. They're going to try and get the golf course back. The 10-year lease is actually a 14-years lease. After 10 years, they are allowed to, we are allowed to renegotiate, hopefully to buy it. But if they don't, we can keep it for two more years at a dollar, and then we'd have to go back again and renegotiate again to see if we could buy it, or, and then we go two more years again. After 15 years, I'm, that's 14 years. For 15 years, I'm told you've got to rebuild these courts. At that point in time, if we haven't come to an agreement, then they've got to rebuild the court. I have a feeling at that point in time, when they have to rebuild the court, they're probably going to turn around and let us buy it, buy the property out, but until that time, $1 sounds like a pretty okay deal to us. It's also going to be on the Ironville Trail if we do decide to do this. It is an area that is, that has a elevated age group in that area. It's one of our oldest age groups. So pickleball is a natural for their group. And so we just thought this would be a good idea, good plan, and bring it to you guys to see what you guys think. So I'll open it up for discussion. Anybody want to talk about it right now?
I can, I can start this. So, why not 20 years? And how, and did we ask about a 20-year lease? 10 years seems so short based on what we're going to have to spend to build these? And how did you come to the determination that that age group would use it to the degree that should be used to spend this amount of money? Did you talk to the leagues about this as well?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't you discuss that a little bit?
We talked to the pickleball leagues, we talked to quite a few of the senior citizens. It was in the survey. It was one of the largest things that people picked out was pickleball. So demographically, it's there. It's solid, although I wouldn't mind leaving one of these pickleball courts as a tennis court. But I, you know, whatever it is, it is. What was the other question? Why short time? We designated 15 years. They came back at 10, and we says, no, we want it closer to 15. That's when it ended up being 14. But we, but we were told these courts last 15 years. We were trying to get one full use out of the court.
Oh, sure.
And as far as purchase of it, they're still paying taxes on this property based on this property being worth $100,000. We are not willing to pay $100,000 for this property. And we've come back and offered them as high as $30,000, because that's what some of the trustees mentioned, that they'd be interested in purchasing it. And they have stated no. So I would rather collect our taxes at $100,000 a year than pay the $1.
Okay, so. What happens, and you were going to check on this last time we talked, and so it's a good time to bring it up. What happens if this company decides to change ownership? Then what?
The way the lease is set up, the lease runs with the parcel and with the land, so we'd be leasing the land. There is in here a section on right of first refusal. So the township does have the right of first refusal if they are going to sell the property to a different owner, that we could offer to purchase the property from the new owner outright if that time.
They also, under the lease, are required to maintain the property, the exterior of the property. In other words, we don't have to do landscaping or anything. They're going to do all that.
Grass cut.
Because they're doing it around, all around there anyway.
Just upkeep of the courts.
Yeah.
So really, it's a win-win for us because they're keeping up the courts and we're having another activity for whoever wants to play pickleball.
For the money, it's a low, it's a low-maintenance scenario for us, for a group of people that are using a lot of our facilities right now. I mean, the elderly are using our facilities. They've really taken over that gym. And I believe that it's also in an area where we really don't have much. I mean, you've got Van Buren Park, but Van Buren Park is isolated from this group. They don't have very much in this area. Maybe it'll help, it'll be, it'd be a nice green area. I think it will be. That's why I went forward with it, so.
How many leagues do we have?
Huh?
How many?
How many leagues? Yeah, pickleball leagues.
How many pickleballers do we currently have?
Actual number of pickleballers, I don't know, because it's run through Parks and Recreation, but I can tell you it's offered at least three days a week here. And there are people who come from Northville, Westland, Canton, and they go all over.
And they go there too. Our people go there.
And our courts are indoor? Would we still keep those indoor in case of bad weather?
Your community center would probably be a big plus for it too if that happened, because they'll be, they'll want to be indoors during the winter.
Very good. All right.
They might like to be indoors in the summertime with the air conditioning, but you know.
Some days.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so think about it. It'll be coming back again in two more weeks. Okay? Thank you, director. Thanks. All right, next item is to consider approval of the COVID-19 response plan for Van Buren Township. Not going to ask for a motion for approval, because I have a feeling we're going to develop that plan as we talk today. I will tell you this, that there is no right answer. There's no wrong answer. Nobody has any idea what to do. There are 2,000 cities and townships in Michigan, and they're doing, no two seem to be alike, all right?
Are you talking about the Corona?
The Corona, yeah, how does the government respond to the coronavirus?
Well, shouldn't we have a motion and a second to?
For what?
For, to discuss this and, no?
I could put forward my proposal.
Well, I don't know what your proposal exactly is. Okay, all right.
Okay. So basically, the proposal that I put forward, and it put forward was based, has been, has changed actually two or three times now in the last three or four days. It was a hybrid of Northville Township's plan, which was a leveled response to this. Basically, at this point in time, we're going to do this. In future, we're going to do this. If this happens, we're going to do this. It was also based upon, the closest one that's identical to it, or a lot like it, was Bellev's, where they tried to limit, City of Bellev, where they want to limit anybody coming into the township hall. They basically locked the doors, or they're not locking the doors, they just let anybody come in, and they explained to them they can't do business with them, do business remotely unless, and if we can't do business remotely, then make an appointment. We started that way today. I can tell you, it didn't work. It limited a little bit of the people coming in, but when they come in and people come in and they get into the building, they expect to be waited on, they expect to be served the way government should wait and serve on people. So you either have to lock the door, put a sign out there saying, please call, so that we can make sure we get them remotely handled, or you pretty much have to close down. So I went back to the drawing board with my group, and we came up with the idea that we were going to go with this level-one system, which would be, basically shut the doors and lock them, put signs out there that basically say, you have to call first, because almost 90% of what people want to do can be done with a remote box. Put your payment for your water in the envelope and put it into the box. Or you can be, come in on, online and do your building permits or whatever else. Try to get them to do that. If we can't handle their work remotely, make an appointment to allow them into the building so that we can limit the amount of people that come in, the way, the beautiful way that those other systems were supposed to work. But they're not working very well. I've talked to other governments. Leaving the doors open when you're working, people come in and they get very angry when they can't go up to a counters. We can't let that happen. So anyway, the idea was to do this process for two weeks, and in two weeks, reevaluate based upon what's going on in the state of Michigan. And if we have to go another week to the April 6th timeline, then you go to the April 6th. If that doesn't work out, you've got to go to the April 12th, and you go on to the 12th or April 13th. But every, you know, after two weeks, you start reevaluating on a weekly process. Level two, though, under our system, would have been if the state of Michigan or the federal government tells local government to close down, we close down. Okay? We're not closing down right now, because in my mind, government should be there when people need them most. And I don't know what they're going to need, but if they have an emergency need, then I want it to be there. That's why I want to be open. So that's, so the plan that we have right now is we're going to, or the plan that I am putting forward is that I would like us to stay open with a skeletal crew, because it's going to be reduced need, that would limit as many people in the building, lock the doors, and have them call in to either make appointments or to be handled remotely. Have this go on for two weeks and then reevaluate after two weeks. If the state says close down, or the state starts closing down themselves, then we close down. That's what I'm proposing right now. I know there are other proposals out there.
So, just to recap this, so you're saying the doors are going to be locked. There'll be a sign out there, call, and hopefully they can get through right away.
Well, they'll, yeah, they'll be getting the supervisor's office, and then we'll remove the calls. And we're not going to send them through the push this number or call this number. They're going to get a person answering.
And then they tell you what their problem is.
Yes.
And then we go from there.
Yes. The only other way is to just basically stay open. You can't, you can't leave those doors open and say, come on in, and by the way, you can't walk up to the counter. Bellev's handling it. I know it's not working for us. So does anybody else have a idea? Director.
Your chair. Okay, my, my suggestion is, we follow the guidelines given to us by the CDC, which is what state, local, and county is doing. The CDC has given us direction. The state is not going to tell local government what to shut down. They're only giving directions to. They're doing what they need to do in regards to shutting down. As we know, this morning, they shut down restaurants, bars, casinos. I'm, it's my belief that, listening to the CDC all day yesterday, all day Saturday, that this is going to get worse before it get better. And in order to control the bill curve and to get us, to stop this and get the numbers down, we have to stop all contact regarding a person-to-person contact in however way we can. And if that means shutting down the township for that bill curve, which is whatever they, the CDC is recommending, at least 14 days, that's what I think the township needs to do until we can find out what's going to happen. This is moving gradually, day by day. We see changes that made Saturday, changes made yesterday, and again, the changes made today. I think something else is going to come out tomorrow. This is going to get much worse before it get any better. And it's our, it's our position to lead, and we have to lead by example. We can't tell our residents to do A, B, and C if we are not doing anything. We have to lead and show them that we need them to follow the guidelines of the CDC, BC, and that is to limit exposure. We have employees here that shouldn't be here, that's compromised, have issues that shouldn't be having direct contact with certain individuals. So we're telling whoever we have here to leave, go home. We don't know what you're doing when you go home. Come back and intervene with, with us. That's exposure. It's not the idea that we don't have, how many people we have here, it's who they're coming in contact with when they go home. We don't know that. Are the kid that's not showing any symptoms coming in contact with them? Are their daughter at 16 that's not showing any symptoms coming in contact with them, and then they come back to work and they? We don't know that. That's why there has to be, has to be something put in place to stop it. And I think, we're not saying shut down the government. We're saying we still got to come in and do certain things just as we would when we shut down for Christmas holiday. We still had to do payroll, we still had to do the voucher, we still would check, come in and check mail. We still would attend to the phones and follow and do the business of the township, but that can be done, a lot of that can be done remotely and, and by someone coming in, checking on their specific duties. duties. So, I think that the township should be shut down at least until the 14-day period, which was run through the first of the month, and then revisit that at that time, depending on the situation we're in.
Look, this is new territory for all of us, and it's our jobs as community leaders to keep our residents and our staff safe. We need to get ahead of this and not behind it. I'd rather do too much than too little and cost someone their lives, and we have to look at it like that. As far as shutting the township down, I believe we should shut the township down, have minimal staff. Of course, we still have... We still have to keep fire and safety going, but to have the directors report in, close the township doors, and then they're compromised, they're going in and out, they're going to interact with each other. It's just what happens. Why would we do that? Why would we take on that risk? There's nothing, all of you directors, employees... What you do here, you can do at home just as well. I'd rather keep you safe and your family safe. Why take that risk? It's not worth it to me. Minimum, close the township for two weeks, we reevaluate. Of course, we have to get out payroll. Of course, we've got to handle water payments. That all can be rearranged. But to have anyone here for any length of time is too big of a risk that I want to take. Plain and simple. We have to prevent this illness. All of us need to prevent this illness, and being here is not preventing this illness.
Supervisor.
But?
I would agree with Reggie and Mia, and I would say that I think the best bet would be to close the township down, reassess it in two weeks, and see where we need to go. But at least we've stopped the danger. We also know we have trouble with childcare with some of our employees. So, this way, we've taken care of all those problems.
And then employees are paid.
And then hopefully, keep employees safe.
And paid. Just got to say that one more time soon.
Trustee White. Trustee White.
Yes. I totally agree with the closing the township down for two weeks, locking the doors, and you really are not closing the township down because you are keeping minimal staff inside to conduct township business. We simply cannot close down the township for a long period of time, because business has to be conducted. And I think that your suggestion is very, very appropriate. We can always revisit that in two weeks and then extend it if necessary at that time. It's not necessary currently to shut down the township three or four weeks, and especially since you're closing the doors and the public won't have access. And two weeks is very appropriate, and as I stated, it can be reevaluated. And if it appears that we need to close for another week or so in two weeks, so be it. But our township needs to conduct business in the best manner possible. Locking the doors is appropriate, and conducting business by telephone or whatever is appropriate, and I commend you for this action. And again, I strongly support you in closing it for two weeks and making a decision in two weeks as to how we should move forward at that point in time, to reevaluate the position and situation as it is in two weeks. And thank you very much, Supervisor, for bringing this forth.
Okay. Kevin, Trustee Martin.
I agree with Clerk Wright and the others that I don't think we should have anyone here, because they still have to interact with each other. The spirit of the edict was to limit person-to-person contact. That means person-to-person contact. That means the... Our employees that work here, our directors, I know we have essential services, fire, public safety, and probably water department, if they have water main breaks or whatever. That's going to have to be dealt with, but I think we should limit all contact as much as possible for the two weeks and see what happens from there. I don't... The directors that can work from home, that can work remotely, they should. And I don't think that we should... I don't think we should man the building. We should do what they ask us to do and close down. It's not going to... There's nothing that's pressing that really has to be done, except for public safety and fire.
What about meals on wheels?
Okay. It's Trustee Martin's turn until you're done. Yeah. You done? Then it's Trustee Frazier's, but I will deal with meals on wheels on this.
I think we should shut down. That's it. And that means that the directors do not come in. If we're shutting down, we're shutting down. I think we're not in a unique position. All the townships surrounding us are going to be doing similar things. I think business for two weeks is going to be slowed down. The stock market is slowed down. Everything is going to be at a halt until we know what this virus is going to do.
Before you go to the seniors?
I just want everybody to know, we're not abandoning the township.
No.
Okay? Shutting down don't mean that we're abandoning... I'm not going to abandon the clerk's office. My deputy is not going to abandon the clerk's office. We're going to pay bills. We're going to make sure everyone is paid. The treasurer's not going to abandon the treasurer's office. We always come in and take care of business. Even when we shut down during the holiday season, we always do what we need to do to make sure that the business of the township continue to flow. And we would do that also now. We would come in, check the mail, make sure bills are getting paid, do whatever we need to do to get it done. But what we're saying is that every employee shouldn't have to come in here and put their stuff at risk, because anytime you can go out in your house and go out into the public and come back, you're putting yourself at risk. I really hate the fact that our public safety has to put their stuff at risk, but they do that every day, and we appreciate it, and we know that's what you have to do, and we commend you for doing that. But I think I agree with everyone's statement that that's what we need to do, and I think we're leading by... We're leading by the response that we make and ensuring the people that we're... Our resident, that we're making that decision and that we're serious, and this is a serious issue, and they need to take precautions also.
All right. So, if I'm doing my little straw polling here, Trustee White and myself are the only... Are off on the side. If we were to go for a total shutdown, I do have to ask one addition that I'd like it if you would consider. The supervisor needs to be authorized to recall personnel as needed for emergency purposes. And Trustee Martin hit on the first one. Water, main breaks, sanitary sewer breaks. Meals on Wheels, okay? Meals on Wheels was actually shut down for a couple days there, it looked like. So, and we were going to feed our seniors no matter what. It appears that they are bringing it back up, but it's being brought back up in a tenuous position. We will feed our seniors, and I would like to, as an addition to this motion, if we elect to shut down, ask that, first of all, that we be allowed to bring back employees as needed. Secondly, I'd like it if you guys would set aside $10,000 for emergency services that may become necessary, and those services would be, hopefully not, but feeding our 75 to 100 senior citizens that we feed every single day that are homebound, okay? That would be one of them. Another far-fetched extreme would be, should we need to put up a tent for doing things, unfortunately, that need to be done sometimes in these scenarios, checking people out and such. I doubt that we'll need any of that, but...
I make the motion that we allocate $10,000 to be set aside to take care of emergencies, which was specified by you, as it may appear.
On COVID-19 or...
Yes, yeah. Hopefully, we won't use any of it.
How would we feed them? Would they be to-go meals?
Actually, I don't know. I have contacted a couple of restaurants and people in the area, and for about $600 a day, I think we could feed them. So, that's $3,000 for a week. So... But otherwise, we would open up our kitchen, and we would go buy food, and we would literally call the volunteers in, senior center. We would call in the Parks and Recreation workers on an emergency basis and spend a day cooking up enough meals to feed them, and then we would deliver them. And if that's what we need to do, we will feed our seniors. We'll be taken care of. That's all I know.
So, no delivery whatsoever?
We do the delivery.
We would deliver to the outside. We'd knock on the door and we'd say, "Hey, it's here," and we'd walk away. We would limit contact for their safety as well as ours. But I think that I've talked to enough board members that every board member here is not going to let any of our seniors starve or be hungry. So, actually, I have a motion, and I have a second, and I don't... I'm going to run with the ball while I'm there. Can I get a... I have a motion to approve up to $10,000 in emergency money for COVID from Clerk Wright. It was supported by Trustee Miller. Hearing no further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next item is, what are we going to do? It sounds like we have a... We have a... I'm going to... I'm going to ask... Go ahead, Trustee Martin.
Chair, I'm going to interrupt you for a minute. So, are we able to suspend water shut-offs for late payments or anything like that? Are we going to do that? We got to suspend late fees if they can't get their bill in on time, or at least shut-offs anyway.
Would you like to make that motion for water shut-offs, late fees?
Due dates.
Due dates? Would you like to make that motion for any fees due to the township?
Well, I will, but I'm going to preface this, because a lot of companies are shutting down, and people are not working for whatever reason, so just to eliminate some of the hardship. So, yes, I would make a motion that we suspend utility shut-offs, water shut-offs, late fees, and adjust due dates on the water bills.
Support.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there any other discussion on that? Clerk Schubert, you okay?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay.
Is the grace period... Is there a certain...
Until we decide that we open.
Okay. I think that's best.
Well, I mean, just as a discussion point, we could reevaluate that when we come back in April.
Absolutely. Okay.
Hearing no further discussion.
Supervisor.
Trustee White.
We're voting on motions that were not on the agenda, and I think that's inappropriate. I think that the supervisor should take control and do whatever is necessary to keep the township running for the next two weeks, and we should... You should have that authority from the board, because of the situation that we're in currently with the CV-19 issue, and I'm all in favor of giving you the authority to do any type of emergency action necessary. And we should not be voting on items or issues that are not on the new business items. So, I think the supervisor has to take control and take this under his hand and do what is necessary, and then report back to us when we have a meeting with everyone there in two weeks as to the expenditures. We cannot deny our residents the actions that they need, and you can do that under an emergency basis, and we'll approve it at a future meeting.
Through the chair.
Can be added to the board.
Chair.
Trustee Miller.
Well, we can add, by law, any agenda item, and we can vote on it. This is a regular meeting. So, it's not inappropriate. It is not illegal to add agenda items and vote on them, especially during these trying times. And to give the supervisor a... Such a broad range of authority is... I'm against that. I'm talking here. I have the floor here. It is my turn to talk. Please stop.
Your turn. Oh, Lord.
All that power without board support? That's wrong.
I don't need it.
Right. But if we're going to have motions made and have support and a board vote, then, you know, let's not obscure duties here.
Trustee White, thank you very much. I really don't need that broad of a power, and Trustee Miller's right, and I've got the Board Action Conduct Policy Rule 2, 2.1, Section B, that allows us to do this. So...
But Supervisor, the motions that were just made were not on the agenda, sir.
I know, but we're allowed to do that. Actually, we're allowed to do that. We wrote that into our conduct policy just in case of an emergency. Quite frankly, we wrote it in, and it was a split vote, remember, because I tried to get it in, thinking to myself, "We'll never need this, but if we ever do, God bless us, we'll have it." We do. We have it. I'm going to pat myself on the back for that.
Supervisor, I thought when we started the meeting, we, under new business, I have, we added Item 4, which was the COVID Response Plan. So, to me, this covers the plan.
You're right. You're absolutely dead on.
So, it was on the agenda.
It's a fluid plan.
Okay.
He might not have that agenda, though.
I mean, we still haven't gotten to the gist of what we're going to do with the building, and I would like somebody...
That's why I want to make a motion.
Who's going to make that motion?
I was going to make that motion. I make a motion.
That in order to protect...
For a minute.
Excuse me. Hey, Nicole?
Can we have it quiet for a minute, please?
Nicole? Yeah, we're making a motion here that we've got to get right. Go ahead, Clerk Schubert.
In order to protect staff and residents, the township hall will be closed for the next two weeks. During that time, employees will be paid, and emergency services will continue as scheduled.
Support.
And in two weeks, we will...
And we will reevaluate the situation to see what's going on.
And you guys... Yeah. I don't see us opening before the schools do at all, but...
The schools are closed until April 6th.
And in your motion, it includes a reevaluation, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I take it that that's... The full times are the ones that are going to reevaluate, since the board won't be in session?
Call, and we'll talk about it. It'll be a board decision.
Okay. Because I don't... Okay. Is there any discussion on that? I hear no... Yeah, okay. Trustee Miller's support. I'm sorry. Trustee White?
So, are we going to be closed for two weeks or three weeks?
Two weeks. We're going to be full closed.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Let's move on. Next item is reports. We have none. Next item is public comment for non-agenda items? Nope?
I don't think you voted on Mr. or Trustee Martin.
To allow for...
Suspend utility shut-offs and adjust due dates.
Oh, thank you. So, let's go back, then. We have an open motion that we have not voted on. Trustee Martin made a motion to suspend shut-offs and late fees and fines.
Support.
And it was supported by Trustee Miller. Hearing any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Opposed? It's unanimous. It passes.
Would there... I have one question. Are there any other fees that we're overlooking at this moment that we're not thinking of right this second that, other than water payments?
It was pretty open the way we said it.
Taxes just been paid, so...
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Public comment again? Okay. Public comment again? No? Yes, Trustee, Director.
Yeah, with the decision to close the township, I want to reassure the Board of Trustees and the residents of Van Buren Township that the Department of Public Services, Water and Sewer Side has prepared for this eventuality. We have, our staff is on call in case of a water main break or an emergency. If you do have a water main break or an emergency, you can call the township's main line, which will get you a menu to the Water and Sewer Emergency Line, or you can call the dispatch office at Public Safety, and they also have the phone numbers of our staff to get them out there immediately to work on this.
And all directors will check, will check their lines on a daily basis.
So, I'd like to rest assured, if there is an emergency issue in the township or an issue that needs resolving, if you call for an emergency for Water and Sewer, for a water main break, you can call dispatch, or you can call the main line. If there is another issue, you can absolutely call the directors, and they will be checking their emails at that time.
And elected officials, elected officials, full-time and part-time, will be also available. Doesn't mean we're shutting off.
Yeah. Good. Thank you.
I'm sorry, did you say?
On vacation.
Director?
We have three employees that are on the public safety side, that are not considered essential employees or essential services. We have two clerical and one janitorial. What are we going to?
Okay. Yeah, that is a good point.
They, they should be the same we do at Christmas. They should be excused.
No, wait a second. You need them.
Okay.
Yeah, who's, who's doing, they're, they're doing important functions over there.
So, the clerical.
You said clerical?
Yes, we have the records clerk, and we have his administrative assistant.
Again, it's about minimizing. Please keep that in mind.
We also have the person that's doing all the, what do you call it, washing everything right now, disinfecting.
I don't think, they're union personnel. I don't know how you could get around.
Services on our side for public safety is, first of all, our maintenance person. It actually not only transports our vehicles to make sure that they're up and running every day, police and fire both, but he also is responsible for doing cleaning in our department. And in the last week, we kind of did some reorganization because of COVID-19, and a lot of his job in the morning is making sure that our station, including our jail cells, are sanitized on a regular basis. So, he's doing a lot of cleaning during.
He's been moved into your department, though, hasn't he?
Yes, he has.
Police and fire services.
Everybody in your department is considered essential, essential of public safety. What are we, they're just essential, yeah. Your department is not, yeah. In other words, you've got him, and you've got those other two. I'm sorry, they're, they're probably not going to be happy about this.
And our, and our secretarial staff that's behind records, we have closed, actually physically closed the records window, but we still have records running, because we have processing that we have to go to the core on a regular basis. We have FOIAs that have to be processed on a regular basis. So, these, these things have to be going out, and that can just sit.
You have to keep them.
Okay.
Thank you, board.
Yeah. Nothing changes. Yeah.
Anything else?
All right. So, where are we at now? Board comments? Does anybody on the board have anything, comments?
I just want to thank the board for being so proactive on this. We all talked to each other. We didn't agree on every single point, but what I, what I had saw today was community leaders stepping up and leading, and keeping the public safe and keeping our personnel safe. So, thank you, everyone.
Just want to get a news break. As of 52 minutes ago, France has been placed into a full lockdown.
To what, her, what?
France.
Oh, France, okay. All right.
I'd just like to say that I hope the residents take this, this virus seriously, and that they abide by the state and the local regulations that we put in place. It's for the citizens' safety, and, you know, we just want to keep our citizens in good health. That's the important thing.
All right.
Sorry. It's like a gun going off.
Sorry.
People would stay in this, stay in this room for a few minutes, because we've got to talk about how we're going to institute this in the morning.
All right.
Commission to adjourn?
Can I get a motion? Trustee Martin?
Yes.
Support.
Here, no discussion. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.